Okay, so good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Policy Committee on Tuesday, September 12, 2023. It's our first Policy Committee meeting for the year. We have a few housekeeping items that we always go through before we begin. A reminder to everyone that this meeting is being recorded on Teams and the recording will be posted on the Halton Catholic Baptist School Board's website. Please, everyone, mute your laptops and use the boardroom microphones when it is your turn to speak. Please use the raise hand function in Teams when you would like to speak and to drop your hand when you no longer have the desire to speak. We have had a request from someone in the gallery to tape the delegation. I just wanted for full disclosure to make sure everybody in this room is okay with that. If anyone is not okay with that, please let me know. Okay, seeing no problem, then it's fine for the individual in the gallery to tape the delegation. Could I kindly request that the land acknowledgement be played?
Halton, as we know it today, is rich in its history and modern traditions of many first nations and nations.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
The Atawandran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surrounding the great.
Are gathered today on these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Callous and solidarious.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
For honor and respect.
For action.
And waters, plants, animals, and ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
The negligent dead.
And Mrs. Saugus of the breaded first nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Let us begin our meeting with an opening prayer by trustee Kelly.
Thank you if you can all join us in the side. Father, Son, Spirit, amen. God of our past, our present, and our future, God of our dreams, our designs, and our decisions, be love in us as we journey through this new school year. Be our inner vision that we may see life through your eyes. Be our inner hearing that we may listen well for your call. Be our inner judgment so that we may discern clearly that which gives us life, promotes growth, and nurtures love. As we move into this new school year, fill us with hope and abiding trust that you wait all in us, so that in both joy and sorrow, we radiate hope. Amen.
Thank you, trustee Kelly. Okay, now we move over to item number two, which is the approval of the agenda. I'm out there asking, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, may I please have a mover to approve the minutes? Or sorry, to approve the agenda? Trustee Dwork? Could I please get a second or a second? Powell, thank you. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Moving on to item number three, delegations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare this evening? Seeing none, move on. Item number four, delegations. We have one delegation for this evening for item 6.2, Policy II-25, Selection of Learning and Library Materials. It's asked this time, I would ask Ms. Nicole DeVoe to make her way to the center table. Take your time, Ms. DeVoe. Take your time to get set up. We'll let you know when it's ready to begin once you're present and the timer is set up. And please speak into that microphone, and you need to press the button so the microphone Ms. DeVoe, do you find that you're ready? Perfect. The delegation this evening is, Ms. DeVoe, welcome. You have 10 minutes for your presentation. Please ensure you adhere to the script that was included in tonight's policy agenda package. If you extend beyond the 10 minutes, we will have to ask you to stop. Staff will keep the time. Thank you. Please, you may begin.
Dear trustees, thank you for allowing me to speak to you today regarding Policy 2-25, Selection of Learning and Library Materials. Like many other HCDSP parents and stakeholders, I am very concerned about the issue of sexually explicit materials, especially those containing graphic illustrations, being selected and made available to our children in schools. My delegation will focus on the need for greater transparency in the selection process and criteria, supporting an amendment to address these concerns, as well as some recommendations. I would like to preface by saying that I do not represent any group in this delegation, nor do I claim any professional expertise in the concerns, opinions, and recommendations stated herein. I speak to you today only as a concerned parent wishing to protect children from potential harm and ensure that our schools are safe learning spaces for all students. This is also not about book banning. I recognize that freedom of speech is an important part of our society. The concern is if there are materials containing explicit sexual content, and if exposure to these materials has potential negative impacts on impressionable students. I do not do in-depth research, nor do I claim any professional expertise in this area. While I did do some research, I was not satisfied to present qualified sources to demonstrate the harm that could be caused in exposure to these materials. Some concerns I came across include that exposure may normalize sexual activity for children, may desensitize them to sexual things, may glamorize sex, and may teach explicit sexual vocabulary. As the Board has a duty of care, I believe more research is needed to understand what the effects could be on students particularly if negative, than to incorporate this knowledge into the selection process and criteria of materials. This is also not to negate all the great materials that can be found in our schools and in those libraries that serve to educate and enrich students on a range of important issues. Many of these materials may assist our young learners in navigating the challenges they face with learning about healthy relationships, family life, developing respect for self and others, discerning use of Internet and social media, to name a few. Considering all the many influences on their well-being, it is imperative to refine the selection criteria and process under the policy. Turning to the policy, the stated purpose is to approve materials to enhance learning opportunities for the religious, moral, intellectual, physical, and social growth of each student in an atmosphere of faith while recognizing individual skills and abilities. The first principle is that the Board approves learning and library materials that support a quality education, which integrates the Catholic faith and the teachings of the gospel with the school curriculum. This seems to be a loose set of selection criteria. Therefore, any materials selected would need to align with this purpose and principle. Is there some sort of paper or digital trail of the approval of each material or group of materials with a reason for selection and who approved it? What also constitutes appropriate, as indicated in the third principle, that the Board will select appropriate materials? Under principles, the policy states that materials have to be consistent with the directives of the Ministry of Education. The two ministry references provided are the Guidelines for Approval of Textbooks and the Trillium List. Trillium List only seems to be for textbooks. In the Guidelines document, it is unclear as to whether learning and library materials other than textbooks fall under supplementary resources, which states Boards have sole responsibility for the selection and evaluation of supplementary resources to support elementary and secondary programs. Boards are expected to ensure that an effective process is in place for the selection and approval of such materials for use in their schools. Referencing the Education Act from the same guidelines, the Minister May 7 caused to be published from time to time list of textbooks, learning materials, reference books, and library books selected and approved by the Minister for use in elementary and secondary schools. Does that mean that the ministry periodically publishes lists with approved library and learning resource materials, then sends them out to the school boards to list to their schools? Under requirements in the policy, it indicates that principals, vice principals, department heads, teachers, librarians, and library technicians, and students are responsible for recommending library materials based on the criteria in the ministry guidelines. I am unclear as to what the next steps are. Does a recommendation go to HCDSP for approval, or to the ministry, or which one first? Which job title or group is responsible for the final decision of which materials the schools can order? I found it confusing to determine exactly how library materials enter into the schools and what the specific process and approval mechanisms are. I believe it is important for the Board to be clear and transparent about this with parents who have a right to know what their children are learning and doing while in school. In a welcome back email sent out from the Board on Wednesday, September 6, the Directive of Education communicated that, "As parents and guardians, you are your child's first educators, and your partnership is vital to the success of our students. Throughout the year, I encourage you to stay connected with your child's school. Your support, engagement, and collaboration are essential components of our vibrant HCDSP community." I appreciate this recognition of parents' role. It is important for parents to have a voice in their child's education, especially where they have concerns for the impact on their child. As a parent concerned about what materials students are being exposed to, particularly anything with explicit sexual content, I would like to make the following comments and recommendations for Policy 2-25 that is under review. One, I would like to voice my support for an amendment to the policy that would place tighter restrictions on the selection criteria relating to materials with explicit sexual content. Two, from what I read under the ministry guidelines document, it seems left up to school boards to implement an effective process for the selection of these materials. I recommend that the Board create a detailed procedure tied to the policy, including selection criteria that is uniform across all schools. Three, the part of that procedure includes a paper or digital trail of the rationale for approval of each material, including demonstrated benefit to students, and the approval steps and appropriate parties responsible, if not already done. Four, that parents have a more active role, such as that a selection committee includes parent representatives. In the policy, it indicates that a committee may review. This should be made more clear where this is necessary, or that the committee is involved every time or only in select areas. Five, that perhaps a Catholic organization be included as a reference embedding the selection of these materials. Thank you again for your time in hearing my and many other parents' concerns. I hope you will take these points and recommendations into consideration in reviewing and updating the policy.
Thank you very much, Ms. DeVoe. So at this time now, all of the trustees, we now have the opportunity to ask two questions each, but for a period of overall three minutes. So two questions within three minutes, so I would strongly suggest your questions are swift and succinct if you can do it. Trustees, if you have questions at this point in time, please raise your hand in Teams, and you will have the opportunity to ask your questions through myself as the chair. Seeing okay, trustee Saunders, you will address the chair and ask the question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, Ms. DeVoe. I'm just wondering, thank you for this presentation. Was there any incident, or is there a book or something that you saw in our library that was particularly concerning to you?
Why no order, Madam Chair?
What is your point of order?
To, Madam Chair, the question should be based on the delegation. I think we are not asking questions on the delegation itself, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee Dwork.
If the trustee could point out to a paragraph or a verse and reference that, that would be great.
Duly noted, trustee Dwork. Trustee Saunders, this is the time for two questions to clarify the actual delegation presentation. So if there's something in the presentation itself that you need to clarify?
Well, how about this? Is there anything that prompted this delegation?
Okay, thank you. I think because, yeah, I do know of a few parents where either their child has brought home a book. This is, I know from the public system this has happened. And then I know someone found a book on the Halton Catholic School Board like search engine, so that was of concern, so they went to that principal, and they were informed by the principal that was taken out of circulation. And I guess, yeah, just talking to other parents and just having concerns, you know, there's been a lot of awareness, you know, there's been a lot of other school boards across Canada and the U.S. where parents and teachers have gone to the school board and shown these books, and yeah, there's concerning, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. DeVoe. Trustee Saunders, do you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, with reference to your delegation through you, Madam Chair, what are you principally interested in achieving tonight that we consider these points that you've brought forward and incorporate that into the new policy?
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I think coming up with some, you know, stricter selection criteria so we prevent any books that might be of concern to parents in this nature from getting into the libraries in the first place. And I think also coming up with a procedure that, like I said, is linked to the policy that is very transparent.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Saunders. Thank you, Ms. DeVoe. I don't see any more questions in the chat. Thank you, Ms. DeVoe, very much for your presentation. Kindly take a seat. Oh, trustee Kennedy. That wasn't up when I looked last time.
Madam Chair, are the questions only for the delegate, or anyone?
No, per our bylaws, the questions are directly related to the script of the delegation. So it's really to be used for clarifying questions on the actual delegation itself.
Who can answer the questions only?
Just the delegate.
Then no questions.
No, because you're asking for clarifying on the actual presentation. Trustee Kennedy?
No, then no questions.
Okay, perfect. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, through Madam Chair. So just to thank the delegates for coming and supporting.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Is anyone else sneaking a sneak their hand up? Thank you, Ms. DeVoe, for your presentation. Please take a seat back in the gallery. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And as per bylaw, our bylaw procedure 12.8, the delegation shall be received as information. Okay? Okay. Okay, so now we're moving on to item number five, which on our agenda is approval of the minutes. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes of the June 13, 2023 Policy Committee meeting? Okay, seeing none? I don't, oh, trustee Carabella? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes? I think that's of the June 13, 2023 Policy Committee. May I have a mover? Thank you, trustee Powell. May I have someone to second? Trustee Dwork? The motion passes, and the minutes of the June 13, 2023 Policy Committee are approved. Okay, now we're moving on to the action items. We're going to move on to item 6.1, which is Policy II-19, Occupational Health and Safety. Trustees, could I have someone please move that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy II-19, Occupational Health and Safety, be forwarded to the September 19, 2023 Regular Board Meeting for Approval? A mover? Trustee Dwork?
Second it.
Second it. Trustee Murphy, thank you. Superintendent Oldman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. This is a relatively innocuous update this evening, but part of our annual obligations under the Occupational Health and Safety Act, we have before you some minor housekeeping changes in an updated requirement section. Other than that, there are no other changes to the existing policy.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. I will now open the floor to questions if any trustees have any questions. Okay, seeing none, we will now take it to a recorded vote of the main motion. Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Student trustee McGuire? I don't think student trustee Duco or student trustee Chua are online. I do not. Trustee Agnew, I see you're online. We're voting on 6.1.
Can you just tell me what 6.1 is, Madam Chair?
No. 6.1 is Policy II-19, Occupational Health and Safety.
I'm in favor, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Okay, so this passed. This will be moved to the next Board meeting, to the regular Board meeting on September 19, 2023. Thank you, everybody. Okay, we're moving on to item 6.2, Policy II-25, Selection of Learning and Library Materials. Trustees, may I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy II-25, Selection of Learning and Library Materials, be forwarded to the September 19, 2023 Regular Board Meeting for Approval? May I have a mover?
Look.
Dwork? May I have a second or?
I can second.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Superintendent Kroll, you have the floor.
Good evening, through you, Madam Chair. Please sort of bring back Policy 2-25. This evening, I have Linda Murray, who's our manager of library services, and Bobby Crowe, who's our curriculum coordinator here with us. We talked about this policy back in June. So as you recall, at the June 20, 2020 Regular Board Meeting, it was on the table for approval. At that time, trustee Carabella had suggested an amendment, which we discussed at length, and it was the wisdom of the Board at that time to bring it back to policy for further review. So I will turn it back to you, Madam Chair, for discussion.
Thank you, Superintendent Kroll. So trustees, just the first order of business, as referenced in the action report that you've all received, is to review the proposed amendment that was moved and seconded at the June 20, 2023 Regular Board Meeting. It was moved by trustee Carabella and seconded by trustee Murphy. Trustee Carabella, please read the amendment and open the discussion.
Okay, through you, Madam Chair. I would like to make a new amendment, amendment to the amendment. Do I do that prior to, or just read, write the amendment I'd like to make?
Well, I would say, let's read the amendment that's on the floor and then move forward with your amendment to the amendment if you feel so inclined.
Okay. So I had moved that materials of a sexually explicit nature, as defined in the Criminal Code of Canada, Section 171.5, in either word, pictures, and/or audio, will not be permitted based on the principles and purpose of this policy.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. So now is a good time if you'd like to move your amendment to the amendment.
Yes, okay. So I would like to change, basically strike that amendment and replace it with any materials that depict scenes of explicit and/or gratuitous sexual content will not be permitted.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. I know you sent it in advance, so we're just going to get that amendment to the amendment up on the screen. So any materials that depict scenes of explicit and/or gratuitous sexual content will not be permitted. Is that your correct amendment to the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. I'll now open the floor up for any discussion or questions.
Madam Chair?
Trustee Dwork? I need to get a mover, please.
Point a favor.
Yes.
So we have had a motion which was moved and seconded. So that motion is motion number one, and then we have this amendment to the motion. So this has to be, oh, sorry, you're getting, I thought you said discussion. Go ahead.
All good. Okay, so we need a mover for the amendment to the amendment and a second or?
I'll move it.
Okay, trustee Carabella will move it. Do we have a second or for the amendment to the amendment?
I'll second it.
Trustee Murphy? Okay, now it's on the floor. Now it's owned by the Board, so we can have our questions and comments on. So looking for any hands up in the chat? Trustee Murphy?
Comment and discussion time, yes? I'm sure, yeah. I would just like to say that I am in favor of the amendment to the amendment, and I think it's important to note that there was discussions involved with senior, like superintendents on the Board. So I think it's important to note that most of this came up, we came up with together. It was a collaboration, and I think it's a good way to safeguard against the books mentioned in the delegation from getting into the libraries in that space.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Next in line, I see trustee Carabella.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So again, I'm presenting this amendment to the policy and in response to letters of concern that we received from parents and in response to the delegation tonight, to have something in the policy to enable a certainty that books that are explicit and gratuitous in their sexual content would not be able to get through a vetting system that would then be available for the students in our schools in elementary and in secondary. I took away the reference to the Criminal Code because I didn't want someone to say that these materials do not meet the standard of a Criminal Code offense and therefore must remain on the shelf or can remain on the shelf. And then I've replaced with easier, I rephrased the remaining component to be simpler. So any material refers to anything I'd have to write out, written, and video and audio. I think that's very helpful, and that was in collaboration. And any encompasses all possibilities. And I placed this amendment in the policy before us as it expands on the bullet above it, which says, "HCDSP and its schools will select appropriate materials that best serve the needs of all students." And then in particular, the purpose of our policy is to enhance learning opportunities for the religious, moral, intellectual, physical, and social growth of each student in an atmosphere of faith. So we had these in our policy before, but somehow books were brought forward that were found on the search engine that were sexually explicit in content. We can see from the correspondence that we received in the previous Board package, several books. I'll just give one example, Identical, which contains extremely disturbing graphic scenes of incest and sexual abuse. I Am Not Your Perfect Mexican Daughter includes sexually explicit scenes and disturbing content that normalizes abortion, self-harm, and suicide attempts, among other books. So when we, so I brought this amendment forward as concerned parents reached out to me about books like this, and they find that these books are not coherent with our Catholic faith and are aimed to educate students in gospel values. And being a distinctly Catholic school board, this is going to be very important for us that our libraries, which are an amazing and important tool for forming and educating our students, adhere to our faith. And there are so many enriching materials that are there already, helping students thrive and understand the world around them from a Catholic perspective. So, and, you know, being a Catholic school, we have wonderful standards of character, virtue, beauty, and morals to aim to live by. As a school board too, we function as in loco prentice, and we take the place of parents, and we recognize that parents are the primary educators of their children. And library selection material, selection of library materials is something that is very dear to the heart of parents, and they're very concerned and want to be involved in it because of all its formative value, and they have a high trust value of what is being provided at the schools. So I'm asking for this amendment to be put in. I'm very happy with it. I think that it would start that criteria and give reassurance because, and children have the right to be protected from sexually explicit material, and they're all at varying stages of development and innocence, and all students under 18 are considered minors. And parents have the right to protect their children, especially in a school setting where the focus is on education and one specifically that aligns with the Catholic faith. So I do think, appreciate, we are on a very good road to put some meaningful criteria into the policy to help discern the quality of the books and tighten up the selection criteria regarding sexually explicit materials. So I hope that this will be voted in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella, for speaking to the amendment to the amendment. Next in line would be trustee Dwork.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I like the statement, but I'd like input from staff, Madam Chair, on how they would implement it and how to bring it into the system. So staff could elaborate on how they would implement this. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Dwork. To you, Director Klein.
Through you, Madam Chair. Thanks for the question, trustee Dwork, or Chair Dwork, not in this context. I think when we looked at the policy originally, I think that the concerns that were raised by trustee Carabella and by trustee Murphy and others are implicit in the first line, selecting appropriate materials. I think what this does is makes it a little bit more explicit as to which texts we don't want in our schools. And then that becomes the backbone of the training that we'll do with our librarians or the library technicians and also our principals, because the principals are ultimately the custodians of the library. It's their library and their school. So we've already been in discussion about the type of training we'd like to do with our librarians, our library techs, and our principals to ensure that they understand the policy and they understand the changes to the policy. that they understand the policy and they understand the changes to the policy.
Thank you, Superintendent Kroll.
Thank you, Superintendent Kroll. Trustee Dorr, do you have another question? You're welcome. Next up, trustee Agnew.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. So I just have a, I don't have a problem with the statement, but I do have a question with respect to the term gratuitous. Explicit, it seems explicit. Gratuitous, who's going to make that determination on what we deem to be gratuitous? Who is an expert within our system who is going to be able to deem what is perceived to be gratuitous? Because I think that definition will differ from person to person.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. And because we might be working into a procedural, I'm going to over to Director Klein.
Thank you, Chair. I think when it comes to parsing words, when it comes to things like gratuitous, we would probably want to get some feedback from, from legal counsel on that word. Because you're right, trustee Agnew, that is one that comes up in legal terminology. So I certainly would want to get a bit of feedback on that. I'm not sure if the, if the working group, I think that is, has been in conversation over the last little while wants to comment on that at all, if that came up at all in terms of the conversation.
Thank you, Director Klein. Superintendent Kroll?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think in terms of that word, when we thought about the meaning of that word, we meant that gratuitous means that it's there and it doesn't really need to be there, right? So it's something that now is sort of focusing or emphasizing the sexual content, much like you might see in an R-rated movie, for example. Where in an R-rated movie, you might have a, some sexual content that doesn't need to be there to advance the plot, as an example. In terms of who would enforce that, like, it would be our librarians and our library techs that are, are those that curate and ultimately are the ones making purchases for our libraries. But in terms of the word itself, if there was a concern, we do have it in the policy where a concern can be raised. The book, the book or the material can be reviewed by a committee, by the principal first and then the committee. So I don't, I don't think that that word is overly problematic in our opinion when we were working through this. Because I do think we have checks and balances baked into the policy.
Thank you, Superintendent Kroll.
So yeah, just one, so just to comment on that. So thank you. And I understand it is going into procedural. I just, you know, again, you know, we're not authors of these texts. We don't know the context in which these references may be made. I agree with that reference about, you know, an R-rated movie. But again, you know, there's going to be some materials that are going to be more liberal than others. And I just want to ensure that we're not removing something because it may have some, it may have gratuitous sexual content in there that is actually really important to the context of the book. So just understanding, you know, how the librarians or how staff will be guided in determining whether or not that should be an allowable book or not. So again, recognizing I'm going into procedural, I just wanted to understand more about that question. So thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Moving, I think trustee Saunders, or trustee Dorr, your hand is up. Trustee Saunders.
Through you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I like what Superintendent Kroll has said. I think that the experience from, you know, years of teaching, I think they'll be able to make a sound judgment on these issues. So I'm not too concerned about the word gratuitous. I think it's, it's kind of implicit what it means. Like it's something that's a little bit too excessive. So I would be happy to work with the superintendents on this issue.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Seeing no more hands up, I do have one question, Superintendent Kroll. Just because we know the individuals that are going to be using this policy and vis a vis the procedure, and they're very well-respected members of our school community, they're trained, our librarians and our librarian techs. But I'm just wanting overall, could you tell us what kind of training our librarians and our librarian techs go through? Because I didn't know until I started Googling it, to be honest with you.
Sure. I'd be happy to let our manager of library services, Linda Murray, speak to that.
So I can only speak through you, Madam Chair, as a library technician and as a librarian. I have both designations. Library technicians have 26 courses. Most of our library technicians have actually an undergraduate degree, which I also have. So 26 courses through a college diploma, two field placements that they do. A lot of our library technicians actually come to us from Mohawk College, start as field placement. So our relationship with Mohawk College is something we really value. As a master's in library and information sciences in secondary, that's the requirement of all of our librarians. That is 12 courses, so a lot of schooling. You take a lot of collection development acquisitions, how to build collections, how to run budgets. There's a lot of courses that go into the selection of library materials for a school. You would select different materials, working for a Catholic school, obviously, than you would in Archives or CNIB, which is the largest library in Canada. Just a little fact, because I am a librarian. But yes, so it is, it's pretty intensive schooling that happens to become a library tech or a library in our school.
And thank you for that, to share with the entire group. So thank you very much.
If I can, Madam Chair. Sorry, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the ongoing training that Linda does with our librarians and library techs throughout the year. So that we're sure that they're up to date and current with most current standards, new technologies. A big part of Linda's job is on the job training. So it's not finish your degree or diploma and then become a librarian or a library tech. There's ongoing professional development that we have for her. Especially around, as Linda said, being a librarian or a library tech in a Catholic school, in a Catholic context.
Thank you so much. And that makes me tired, just listening to all those accreditations. Jeez. Trustee Saunders, did you have your hand up or?
Yeah, may I just ask a question, if you, Madam Chair?
Sure.
So the delegation we had tonight, does that speak to this policy? Like, they've asked that we consider, you know, a different procedure? Is that something that we would discuss at another meeting and potentially weave into this policy? Or where does that fit into the discussion tonight?
So the delegation, you know, is more than welcome to provide their opinion with some statistics, whatever they wish to provide when they delegate. Procedure is in the hands of Director Klein. We, as trustees, we can make suggestions and recommendations. And I'm sure through the delegation, Director Klein and staff have read those recommendations and will vet that to where they see fit. Our job is to, we can make amendments to policies to have an overarching view of what that particular topic is. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so the delegation, that was more towards procedure. Is that, is that sort of how we view it or?
Well, my personal opinion, I think it touched on a lot of things. The delegation was very fulsome and very informative. So I'm not going to touch that. I think it touches on everything, policy, procedure. Okay. Okay, seeing no more questions, we're going to move forward. So I'm going to keep myself straight. So we're voting now, we have a motion and second amendment to the amendment, which we see here on the screen. So we will be voting for the amendment to the amendment. Okay? I'm going to go slow because it can get complicated. Okay? I just want to make sure everybody knows what they're voting on. Trustee Dorr.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy. The amendment to the amendment. So what you see in blue.
In favor.
You're testing me. In favor. Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew. Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Student trustee McGuire.
Favor.
I do not see student trustee Chua or Depoo. Does anyone else? I don't want to miss them. And I'm also in favor. So the amendment to the amendment has been moved and is passed. So now we have to go back to the amendment as amended. Clear? The main motion, as amended by the amendment. Okay? Are we good? I know. So we approve this. Any materials that depict scenes of explicit and/or gratuitous sexual content will not be permitted. That has been approved by the Board of Trustees. So now we got to go back, add it into the policy and approve it as the motion, right? As the main motions. Right? I look at Helena because she does know the rules.
Well, just to clarify, point of clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's here. It's being voted on. So this amendment is in the policy now. And now we are going to discuss any other issues in the policy. And then you vote on any other amendments that come up or other things. And then we vote on the whole policy at the end, as amended with all various other things added or not.
Right, so this line that we just voted on was passed. It's now in the policy. So now we move on. We don't have to vote again. Because the original amendment is now completely changed. Go ahead, trustee Dorr. Go ahead.
So Madam Chair.
Let's make sure we do it right.
Okay. This is the way I would look at it. So you had an amendment, the board meeting which came here.
Yeah.
So that's, that's motion one, amendment. It's first amendment to the motion. That's a motion. Then you went to a second amendment. But that second amendment carried. So you go back to the main motion. Now you've got to vote on the main motion as amended. So before it goes into the policy here now, you've got to vote on this that you see on the screen.
That makes sense, too.
To put it into the policy.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Dorr. That's helpful. Okay, so now we're going to vote. This is going to be, the amendment to the amendment is replacing the amendment that came over from the board meeting. So we have to do one more vote. Trustee Carabella, you're on. Okay. So we're going to vote on this. So now, once we vote on this, it will be actually in the policy. And then we can move on. Yeah. Okay? Okay. So trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Dorr.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
Favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Student trustee McGuire.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So unanimously passes, this amendment to the policy is now passed and will be moved forwarded to the board meeting. Okay? So we've taken care of that amendment. So we're going to move on. We're going to open this policy up. Is there any other discussion on this policy that we would like to take care of at this time? Okay, trustee Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. I would like to propose adding a bullet under the heading "Selection of Library Materials."
Okay, so I think you sent it just before the meeting, right? So we have it in writing? Is that correct? So we'll put that up on the screen. Everyone just take a step back, we'll put it up. I'm just making notes. Trustee Murphy, do you see that on the screen?
Do not.
So it's under the section "Selection of Library Materials," correct? Yeah. So we just need Andrea.
Madam Chair, I do not have the amendment. I didn't get the email.
Read it. If you just want to read it, sure.
So the bullet I propose that we add is, "Under selection of learning materials, items deselected from HCSB libraries will be recorded digitally and include the rationale. A report brought forth, with a report brought forth to the board annually." I'm open to discussion on this.
Trustee Murphy, because I'm old, can you go slower? Let's start. Items deselected from library materials will be?
Recorded digitally.
Recorded digitally.
And include the rationale.
And include the rationale.
Okay, can I continue?
Yes, please, thank you.
A report will be brought forth to the board annually.
A report will be brought forth to the board annually. Perfect. Is that it, trustee? Have you got it right? Okay, perfect. Okay. So we see another amendment, "Under selection of library materials." I will open the floor for questions. Trustee Murphy, you want to, you want to speak to this amendment?
I just want to speak to make, I think that de-selection is, some could argue, as important, maybe not quite, but as important as selection. You know, as we keep the library, as our experts keep the library up to date and as they're removing books, for whatever reason that might be, like a broken spine or it's an out of date or, you know, there are all sorts of rationale. And I just think to, or to, to offer greater transparency, if there was some sort of record of that process, it could be presented and stakeholders, the board, parents, can see books that are removed and the reasoning behind the removal.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. I'll move on to trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to comment, but we haven't seconded? Did we second?
No. Could I get a seconder, please?
Sure, I can second.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Okay, trustee Carabella?
I think to that, I would like to ask a question. I think it's always helpful to have this sort of information. You can learn from it, see trends, see even the cost of what books are being let go and what's coming up. Do we currently have something like this in process where we are, you know, I guess each, I'm understanding now each library is its own in the school. So do they report what they've selected and what they deselected somewhere? Or what happens with that? Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella.
Through you, Madam Chair. Trustee Carabella, so weeding, as trustee Murphy said, is just as important, maybe even more so important than bringing new books on. We all use, in the whole library world, most libraries use something called the musty principle. So for example, something that's ugly, which is not really then, that's the you. If there is that broken spine or something that you would spend more on tape than the actual, just replacing the text, things that are misleading. For example, when language changes, which it has, especially in the last five years, language has changed. Curriculum documents change. So for example, those, like, social studies, for example, things that are no longer, would no longer be considered appropriate language or appropriate pictures in books and things like that, we would change as well. Or we would weed as well. If there's something that was an addition from 2000 but a new addition, we would weed that as well. So for example, the, the, there's many reasons why we would weed a text. Most of them happen because they're just really well-loved. That, that, that would be probably 90% of our texts are just really well-loved. That's, that's why they, that's why they're weeded, recycled.
Thank you. Do you have a trustee, a follow-up, trustee Carabella?
Well, just the follow-up is, so is this recorded somewhere? Like, does each school librarian record what's weeded and send it to some central area? Or does she keep track for her own school? Or he keeps track for his own school?
We would just pull a report at the end of the year if we wanted to just, but it wouldn't have copies. It would just have numbers for us. So for example, like, we wouldn't be able to necessarily see. So for example, like, we wouldn't be able to necessarily see, I mean, it would, but it would just be for a school, like for a school board our size, it would be thousands that would go, but also thousands that would come in. And we could weed titles, I think, just based on if, if, like I said, if there was a new addition that came out, all those would go. So you would have those copies. And there might be 10 in each school, times 56, that's 560 copies. They would never write all that down, but.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Moving on, trustee Doherty.
Thank you, madam chair. Just to add on to what trustee Carabella asked, how, how difficult is, or how easy is it for you to pull a report across the system and bring to the board? Is it something which can be done quickly, or something that's going to take a time away from the students?
I don't think it could be done quickly, especially like, right now, we're just trying to get textbooks in students' hands and move textbooks around. So it would, it would definitely be something that would take a lot of time for our library staff to, to do, to be able to run those reports.
Thank you. Trustee Doherty, do you have a follow-up?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to know that this is an annual report. I think this is an annual report. Trustee Murphy? Okay, yeah, it says annually there. Just trying to quantify the time. I want to see, madam chair, I want to know what value it brings. At the time, it's, it's worth spending that much time to bring a report, so it's value addition to us.
Okay, thank you, trustee Doherty. Go ahead.
Through you, madam chair. I think that it would also be something that we would have to ask our third-party vendor to be able to do as well, like our ILS provider. Because we do have reports that can be run, but actually to have, I think the, the bibliographic data is not the problem. It would be something where it comes from the rationale for each and every title, do you know? Like, that, that would be a lot of information and a lot of time.
Thank you, trustee Doherty. Trustee Murphy, trustee Carabella, your hands are up again, or? Must be the rain today. I think that's what it is.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Doherty, you have your hand up again. Yeah, go ahead.
My hand up again. Madam Chair, I did hear from our chief librarian that it's going to take a lot of time. But again, I'd like to ask the question of trustee Murphy, if she would like to answer, what level of detail are you looking for? So it says rationale, what, up to what level of detail, and I do hear it's going to take a lot of time. I'd like to support this, but I don't want it taking a lot of time. If that's going to take our librarian, away from our librarian, from our students, that's, that's a problem. So can you clarify what level of information looking for?
So.
Thank you, trustee Doherty. You're okay.
To be honest, I'm not a librarian, so I can't speak to how this would look. I'm just trying to create a way for there to be access to the information of what's been deselected. And so I would be open to, if you have any suggestions around the report, maybe, maybe just making it available, giving them time before the first report. I'm open to suggestions. I just, I do like the idea of adding something around the deselection process into the policy, if that makes sense.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Trustee Doherty.
Yes, madam chair. I'll go back to our staff again, and after hearing what trustee Murphy has suggested, is there a quick way, again, once again, emphasis on the word quick, of generating a report and just providing a one-liner explanation to that? I really would like to see this, but I want to make sure that we're not taking time away from classrooms.
Thank you, trustee Doherty.
Through you, madam chair. Trustee Doherty, you know, I think Linda's being kind. I think this is a lot of work, and I, to be fair, I do think this could potentially be a workload issue for our unionized employees as well. This is a new duty we've never asked them to do before. So just my first reaction is that we might, there might be some unintended consequences here for, for this.
Thank you, superintendent Kroll. Trustee Saunders.
Yeah, I, I think what would be reasonable is maybe superintendent could give this a shot and just we'll see what comes out, you know, knowing that we want it to be sort of short and sweet, you know, description. And then maybe if, when they bring it back to the board in a year from now, we can decide, is this adequate? Is this too much? Is it too little? So I, I support the intent and, and I respect that they, they have a timing issue. So maybe we could leave it with them as a procedural issue to sort of say, okay, this is what we can do at a reasonable time. And then when they bring it back, maybe we can evaluate it at that time, rather than try and work out too many details right now.
Thank you. Trustee Saunders. Director Klein?
I'm gonna, thank you, chair. I'm going to support what superintendent Kroll has said, and I do, I thought the same thing. I think with all due respect, Ms. Murray, I think you're being very kind and very selfless in this regard. Having been a teacher many, many years ago, and working closely with a librarian at the school I started at, I, I saw a ton of work that was, that went on, not just throughout the year, but certainly there's certain fits of, of extra time that you dedicate to this, and it's a lot. And there's varying reasons for it. Many books are just, they're outdated. They don't, they don't make sense anymore. Particular ones, when they're in content areas where you, I'm dating myself here, where you would have books that might say, one day, people might go to the moon. And so, yeah, those things should be stricken. And then you have ones that, of course, you know, somehow reflect, I think, outdated stereotypes that need not be in schools. To, to list those and then to, one consent set, then that would lead to questions about why that would be. I think that's, I think that's onerous. It's, I think it's too much for, to ask for our employees to be quite honest.
Thank you, director Klein. Trustee Doherty, your hand is still up?
Sorry.
Trustee Murphy?
I would like, thank you, madam chair. If I was, if, if I was, if I was to amend the amendment to take out the part about the report, is it still too much of a workload, or, or let's say, just outside of the realm of possibility to record any deselected items, taking out the report aspect of it?
Thank you, trustee Murphy. To director Klein?
I'd, I'd ask superintendent Kroll to weigh in on this, and Ms. Murray as well. I would, I would be remiss if I didn't note that it is, I'm sure it's with some discomfort that we have a staff member who is part of a Teams meeting right now, where we're kind of asking questions that involve what she would be asked to do or expected to do. I think that for someone who gives a lot of her time and works very hard to ensure that our schools have the best possible supports for teachers and other educators and students, I think that, that would be a little uncomfortable. I would think this might be something that, under advisement, we might want to look at in terms of next steps.
Thank you, director Klein. Trustee Murphy, I'm just going to go back to you based on what director Klein said.
I would be open to working with superintendent Kroll to maybe discuss, taking this amendment off the table now, discussing it further so I can get more clarity, and we can come up with a solution together and move it to another meeting.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. So we can officially say that we're going to remove that amendment? All in favor of that? Yes, I see. Okay. All right. Thank you, trustee Murphy. Very collaborative. So, oh, trustee Carabella. You have the floor.
Thank you, madam chair. So I'm just looking at one more thing about the selection of library materials. In the first bullet, it lists principals, vice principals, department heads, teachers, librarians, librarian technicians, and students will be responsible for recommending library materials. So I was just wondering, also listening to the delegation, and are parents invited to also recommend books? Or could they be invited to recommend books for the libraries?
Thank you, trustee Carabella. I will defer to director Klein.
Thank you, chair. I'll defer to superintendent Kroll, and more, more importantly, I know he won't mind that, won't find that insulting, Ms. Murray, to see if that has been something in the past.
Yeah, through, through you, madam chair. I can tell you confidently as a former school principal that we value input from parents, from community members, from students, often in our secondary schools, that it might have a book or a resource that they're interested in. We would never turn someone's interest in our own resources away.
Thank you, superintendent Kroll. Trustee Carabella, follow-up?
The follow-up would be then, is that something we can put then, as parents in there as well? Like, library technicians, students, and parents? To actually put it in the policy?
Trustee Carabella, we, that would be an amendment, so you'd have to have it moved and a seconder for an amendment, and just be I won't say anything until you move and second it. So you'll move the amendment? I need a seconder.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll move it to have discussion.
Okay, I need a seconder. I'll second it. Okay, trustee Carabella. Over to you to speak to the amendment.
I'm, just what I was re, just what I said, that I think parents also have valuable insights. They come across books too. And just that they, they can be, and if they're already doing it, then it would just be that their names would be here. Parents would be included as, as offering material. And then anyways, all that material must get somehow selected in the end, whether yea or nay, so just that it's one extra voice adding a title. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Do we have any questions or comments on this amendment? Trustee Murphy?
Thank you, madam chair. I would, I support this. I think it's a good idea. I tend to just think of, you know, with younger kids, parents tend to advocate, especially children who might have exceptionalities, and maybe they're requesting like a large print version of a book or something. And so I think it's just a nice way of including caregivers and parents into the selection process.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Trustee Carabella? Your hand is still up. You guys are killing me tonight. Trustee Doherty?
Thank you, madam chair. I just heard from superintendent Kroll that parents are always invited and welcome to give suggestions and guardians. Great. As a parent myself in the system with my child, I would like to be involved with that. But I find this quite problematic here to add the word parents and guardians. Even though we have an informal way of inviting them, the minute you make it and put it part of the policy, you're opening a can of worms. You have no idea what can happen. You can have parents demanding all kinds of books of all natures be put into, into the libraries, and then we have another problem, which we have opened up a can of worms. I'd like to focus on reading, writing, arithmetic, and our faith. These are the things that we need to focus on, and I've said this many, many, many times over the year. And by introducing the word parent and guardians, we are creating a problems. And I heard from staff that we welcome our parents, and we should always welcome parents. So for that purpose, madam chair, I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, trustee Doherty. Trustee Saunders.
Yeah, through you, madam chair. I don't think we can catastrophize things like, you know, assume the worst, you know. I, I think the intent is clear. I think that, you know, for boards beyond us, I think this will make it clear as to what we'd like to do. And I don't think we, we should go to the extreme saying, no, terrible things could happen. I, I don't think that's likely, and I would support it as, as.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. And the great part is everyone gets their own opinion. That's the great part of democracy. Trustee Murphy, is your hand still up? Yeah, okay.
In response to trustee Doherty, is your, may I, may I address a question?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
Is your concern with the word responsible, you know, insinuating now that the parents have this role in selecting the materials, would you be comfortable with taking out or adding the, the part about the parents as a separate note, that they're welcome?
Through you, madam chair.
Trustee Murphy, trustee Doherty, go ahead.
Thank you to trustee Murphy. I have no problem with the word responsible there. Okay, parents should always be responsible for their children and education of children, and that's where we are. But I have a problem with introducing the word parents and guardians there, even though we have heard from staff that we always value parents' input. We have always been doing it, and we've been doing it. But the minute you put parents and guardians, we are forced to, to, to accept when parents come with a book which does not align with the requirements of the Ministry of Education. So are we opening up a can, we are, we are really opening up a can of worms here, where we are introducing something where we never had a problem. So that's my, my problem. I'm 100% with the word responsible, but I'm introducing the word parents and guardians.
Thank you, trustee Doherty. Trustee Murphy? Are you good?
If I could just respond?
Sure.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't share that concern, trustee Doherty, respectfully. I think that we're talking about library materials. I don't think we're assuming that parents are going to come in and say that they, assuming that they're responsible for selecting ministry mandated curriculum textbooks. I think it's in the same way that students might have a suggestion of a parent, like I had given a situation where, you know, maybe a parent has a small child and can't advocate for themselves. So the parent is just going in to say, like, my child would love to have this series in this book. I think it's fairly benign.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. I'm moving on. Trustee Doherty?
My hand goes down.
Trustee Murphy, your hand going down? Trustee Carabella, hand up?
Yes, thank you, madam chair. Through you. I'm just wondering, like, what is the current amount of parents offering suggestions, if you can think of one school? How many students offer ideas, or how many recommendations?
Thank you, trustee Carabella.
I'll end up bouncing this, but I could say from my experience as a, as a former principal, I think that was something that was not unusual. I don't think it was something that would come, you know, every day. We certainly wouldn't, I can't believe we would have any, any stats on that, if that's what you're asking, but.
No, that wouldn't be something that, that we would have statistics on. I can say, you know, in secondary schools, in our conversations, that often students will recommend books that they, that they've heard about, or books that they've seen. I think where we need to be clear collectively is that it's responsible for recommending library materials. It's the decision of the librarian or the library tech as to whether those actually go in along with the principal. So as trustee Doherty said, because, just because someone recommends a book doesn't mean that it's going in our libraries. I think that needs to be crystal clear in the intent. Thank you.
Thank you, superintendent Kroll. Trustee Carabella, follow-up?
Well, the follow-up, I think there, it says, they use the word recommending very clearly, and that's in my mind as well, because the final decision maker is the, is it the librarian and the principal of that school? Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy, your hand is up?
Thank you, madam chair. Just in that same bullet, or it says, based on the evaluation criteria as set by, and then it's, you know, the Ministry of Education. From looking at that document, it doesn't actually include any reference to selection of library materials anyway. So just as a peripheral point, is that even, should that even be in that bullet?
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Director Klein?
I think that, that addresses or speaks to some of the, again, ministry policies and procedures and that, that do speak to this. So I'm going to, not being familiar with those specifically, I'm going to ask Ms. Murray if she could comment, or superintendent.
What I can come on, comment on is that this language has been in policy for a long period of time. And sometimes that's, it's, this isn't language that we've proposed. This is language that's been inherited. And sometimes I think it's important to recognize the difference. So I can't tell you that I could, that I could tell you what's exactly in the guidelines for approval of textbooks off the top of my head. So I don't think I can give you a solid answer. But I just, I would recognize that a group of people like us sat around and thought it was a good idea to include that language when this policy was, in a, in a previous version.
Thank you, superintendent Kroll. Okay, next up, trustee Carabella. That's okay. And may I speak? I'm going to ask a question. So in that bullet point, trustee Murphy, if I may speak to you directly, I do the will be responsible because our library principals are responsible ultimately for bringing it into the library. However, parents and guardians' voice needs to be heard. It's kind of sad, in my own opinion, that we have to put it in a policy. That should just be understood. The parents should be, have their voice at any time about anything. But if we wanted to add it to the bullet, I would just offer up, maybe put parents and guardians' feedback as welcomed. Just offering up first thought.
Thank you, madam chair. I would agree with that.
That's good. I wasn't talking. I'm just teasing. Trustee Murphy?
Yeah, thank you, madam chair. Yeah, I do, I do see your point. I see that the will be responsible has a certain element of, like, you should add it to your to-do list, right? Like, and that's not really the, the message we're, we're saying, like, you're welcome to. But the ultimate decision is on those who are responsible for using the criteria to select the books, right?
Yeah, I almost feel that verbiage almost undermines our librarians and our library techs, where we're saying, other people are going to respond, that's your job. But our feedback is welcome to be recommended per the process. What do you think?
I'm open to your suggestions for wording, if you want to throw something out there.
Well, thank you, Andrew. You're fast. Feedback from parents and guardians is welcome. So remove and parents backslash guardians, friendly amendment. Feedback from parents and guardians is welcome, or is always welcome. Any comments? Feedback? Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, madam chair. So does, is feedback, would it be understood that recommendations? Oh, I see here, and suggestions. Thank you. It's clear now.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Do I need to move that? It's a friendly amendment, right? So I don't have to get it moved. Okay. Any other comments? Trustee Doherty?
Madam chair, I think this is good. I like that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, are we ready to vote on this amendment under the title selection of library materials? To add the verbiage, feedback and suggestions from parents and guardians are always welcome? Just underline that? We have to? Okay, all quiet. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Oh, your hand was up. Okay, hang on. Okay, trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Doherty?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
And student trustee McGuire?
In favor.
And I do not see the other student trustees yet. And I am in favor. Okay, so this amendment, which has been moved and seconded and voted on, is now in the policy. Okay, we've dealt with three amendments. The next step would be now to to vote on the overall policy as amended. Once we vote on this, it will be, if it passes, it will be moved to the next board meeting. If not, it will not.
So you have a question, madam chair?
Oh, trustee Saunders, yeah. Madam chair, I don't see your hand up.
Come in.
Oh. Trustee Carabella?
It is me, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one more question, a clarification on the committee membership for review of materials. So it includes a trustee, and I'd like to clarify how the trustee would be selected. Is it? Is it from the area that the school or the, I'm just wondering, what would be the selection criteria for which trustee would sit on this committee?
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. I will delegate over to Director Klein, as it would be procedural in nature, how that member would be created?
Yeah, I think it would be procedural in nature. I think the, Trustee Carabella brings up a fair point. It's good to have that connection to the family of schools and that that responsiveness or accountability, I suppose. So I think that would be something to consider. On the other hand, it'd be good to consider if there, you know, is a trustee who then accrues some form of expertise or thought around that, like we do have at other committees, usually the committees that are the standard committees. But I take your point. I see both sides of how that would work, because it builds up capacity of all trustees then. And I think you obviously work together and you learn together. So I think that would be something that we'd have to look at.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustee Carabella, I said, I think it's to be vetted and put in the procedure. Thank you. Trustee Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And through you, I have a question regarding reconsideration of learning materials. So I just want to understand the, the process here. So if there was a book that a parent is not happy about, or they have some issue with it, and they take it to the principal, does the principal make the decision on whether to remove it? Or does he have to go, like, can he or she resolve it at the school level?
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Superintendent Kroll?
The principal, sorry, through you, Madam Chair, the principal can definitely make the decision to remove that resource at that time, based on the concern brought forward. This committee isn't often used, because usually those types of concerns would be handled at the school level, where they should be resolved.
Thank you, Superintendent Kroll. Do you have a follow up, Trustee Murphy?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
So if that book, thank you, Madam Chair, through you, if that book is available at multiple schools across the board, and that principal agreed it was problematic, how is that resolved?
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Superintendent Kroll?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. We've talked about this ourselves about the idea that if a red flag is given about a book at one school, that should be shared to other schools so that they can, they can have that information as well. So yes, that will be, as we said, that'll be some of the communication and training that we'll be doing. It does say, and thank you, the principal will inform the manager of library service of the issue and any resolution. It says that, sorry, it was pointed to me, so I'm going to point it to you. And then that would be, then to Murray's job would be to share that with other schools.
Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it.
I got clarified too, so it's good.
Thank you, Superintendent Kroll. Okay, fellow trustees, are we ready to vote on this policy? Looking around, no more hands. Trustee Murphy, hand down. Okay, so we're going to put 6.2, policy as amended, over the past few motions, up for a vote. Okay, everyone clear? Do we need, no, we're good? All right. Okay. Student trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Powell?
Can you come back to me?
Sure. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Dward?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So the policy will now be, it's unanimous, the policy will now be brought forward to the next regular board meeting on September the 19th, 2023. Thank you, everybody. Okay, we'll take a breath, and then we'll move on. Okay. Do you want a two-minute? Okay. Okay, we're going to pause for, we'll be back here wait till we're all quiet in the room. Okay, thank you. Item 6.3, we're now going to talk about policy II-37, volunteers in Catholic schools. Trustees, can I have someone please move that the policy committee recommends that policy II-37, volunteers in Catholic schools be forwarded to the September 19th, 2023 regular board meeting for approval? May I have a mover?
Dward.
Dward? May I have a seconder?
I can second.
Agnew? Just got in there. Superintendent Bukic, you have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Madam Chair. So we have brought II-37 volunteers in Catholic schools back before the policy committee. It was reviewed in, at the June 13th meeting as a discussion item. Trustees reviewed each of the proposed changes and taking into consideration relevant legislation and eligibility criteria. The amendments to the policy reflect the recommendations agreed upon by the majority consensus. The revised policy, II-37 volunteers in Catholic schools, is before you may have a review and consideration. Happy to take any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Bukic. Trustees, I will now open the floor to any questions. Please raise your hand in the chat and lower your hand when your question is finished. Trustee Saunders?
Through you, Madam Chair. I submitted an amendment. Is that going to be discussed?
Okay, so you would like to move an amendment?
Yes, I would.
That you've already submitted. That's perfect.
I have, yeah, I've given it to Andrew.
Okay, so we're going to pull it up on the screen. And once we get it up on the screen, we will get it moved, we will get it seconded, and then we can discuss, ask questions and debate to our hearts' desire.
I will move it.
Okay, we need a seconder for this amendment?
One second.
Trustee Dward seconds? Okay. It's now on the floor. Trustee Saunders, would you like to open up your amendment?
I can put a word.
Yes, so thank you very much. So upon reviewing the policy, what I sort of noticed was, there wasn't like, it's sort of what we'd call in charge, in tax, like a charging section where it says, okay, so you've gone through all this, what happens next? So what I'm doing here is I'm bringing in this amendment. And what, it's consistent with the Ontario Human Rights Commission. The first part is lifted directly from their verbiage. And so, and then they had some examples. So what I'm thinking of is, is, you know, we'll have people working in the schools, volunteers. And what we want to capture is, you know, obviously people who've had issues, you know, that may have some child molestation issues. But also, you know, people maybe that have had a conviction for drunk driving. We don't want them driving, you know, the hockey team to some distant place. Maybe people that are drug dealers. We don't want them, you know, working in the halls, the hall monitors. Maybe someone who's been convicted of gun or violence. We don't want them working, you know, with the football team. And I can actually speak to this, that when I was at McMaster, I played in the football, we had a coach for that exact reason that was removed, because they'd had a history of violence, they had a history of weapons, and they decided they didn't want them in there. So what I'm trying to do is capture, you know, this. So the first part, HSB must look at the person's record of offenses, consider whether the offense would have a real effect on the person's ability to do the task and the risk associated with them doing it. HCDSB can refuse to hire someone based on the record of offenses, only if they can show that it is reasonable to bona fide. So that puts the onus on saying, okay, you know, the policy as it stands, it really doesn't sort of make anyone responsible for making that decision. So if you say, I want this person, or if you don't want this person, you have to have a bona fide reason. And so that's exactly what's in the Ontario Human Rights Commission. The second part was something that Trustee Dward had presented to me. So that's volunteer applicants who submit a criminal record check that lists the offenses for which that pardon has not been received, will have their application reviewed by the, now, I should say, the director. And the director will report back to the board reasons for acceptance or denial. So that sort of keeps us in the loop as to what's happening. So the intent of this is just to sort of broaden it, make sure that we're capturing, you know, all potential issues. And I can, and I don't know if I remember correctly, recently there was, I believe, a hockey team that had someone driving the van who had been convicted of drunk driving, and there was an accident. So this is kind of what I'm getting at. Like, you know, and I know that a director speaks about, you know, our responsibility is to take care of kids, make sure that, you know, we're not putting anyone at risk. So what I want to do is have like a comprehensive sort of charging section that says, you know, we go through all these checks. Once we do that, this is what we can do, and this is what we should do, and this is the hurdles that we have to come over and then have the director get back to us and just say, okay, this is what our decision was. So that's my thinking behind this. So it's broad, it captures, you know, any criminal offense, and it allows us to sort of understand what's happened here. And it'll only happen once a year, maybe once every two years, but I think it's important for us to be aware.
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. But before I move forward, I have to, I have to talk about the office, and I don't want to bust your balloon, but volunteers, we do not hire volunteers. Anything that shows any kind of employee, employer relationship needs to be gone, because they are volunteers in the goodness of their heart, thank God, for them. Okay, so I'm going to go down the speaker's list. You spoke to your, to your amendment. So Trustee Agnew, you're next in line.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I was going to say the same comment with respect to the word hire. The other piece that I wanted to inquire about is, so two things. One is with respect to going to the director. I'm wondering if a superintendent of the school would be better suited for that. I don't know that the director has time to be reviewing all of these. And I think the superintendent of the particular school would have a better handle, you know, on that school community and all those sorts of things. And the second piece is, is I don't know that this needs to come to the Board of Trustees. This is a private matter between that parent or whoever has applied. And there's been some discernment about the ability for them to be included as a volunteer. And I don't feel comfortable as a trustee having that information come to me. That's between that individual. It's a privacy matter between that individual and the person making the decision with respect to the acceptance or denial. So I do think that that is problematic. The rest is what it is, but I do think those, that piece is problematic.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Director Klein?
Thank you, Chair. Thankfully, I think incidents like these wouldn't be, would be rare. But I would certainly, as director, it would be something that you would want to get some But I would certainly, as Director, it would be something that you would want to get some feedback from either Principal or FOS Superintendent. My, in terms of it going to the Director, it really does fall to me. And this was something that was recommended when we had some feedback from legal, our lawyer on it. So I'd just like to point that out. So Director was the one who was identified for that. Again, I would, that's not too frequent an event, and so I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you, Director Klein. Moving on, Trustee.
Sorry, no, I just have another. So I'm okay with that if you're okay with that, Director. So thank you for that clarification. Just want to be cognizant always about, you know, chain of command and the rules. But if you're okay with that, and that's what Legal suggested, then I'm okay with that. I still do have a challenge with respect to the disclosure to Board of Trustees. I think we're overstepping, and I don't think it's any of our business.
Sorry, and I should have, that was the other part of what you had said to Trustee Agnew, that I thought the same thing. I think in terms of sharing information broader than the, you know, the Principal already would be aware, and I would be aware, and the Superintendent would be aware. I would see that as a legitimate concern as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Klein. Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Trustee Dwork, next up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just want to clear up one thing. I see the word persons there, nowhere in the document we have persons. Can we change the word as a friendly amendment to volunteer for consistency and just read something else?
So. So a friendly?
Yeah, it's in a couple of places. Yeah, just a friendly amendment, Trustee Saunders.
They're not a volunteer, though.
Potential volunteer. Yep.
So Halden Catholic Church School must look at a potential volunteer's record of offences and consider whether the offence would have a real effect. So this would be a friendly amendment, Trustee Saunders?
There's another, there's another location, Madam Chair.
Okay, hold on a second.
Second line.
Hang on, hang on. Trustee Saunders, are you okay with that friendly amendment of adding potential volunteers?
I am good.
Thank you. I just want to keep track of where we're at. Trustee Dwork?
Yes, Madam Chair, okay, it's changed there, individuals, yeah, okay. Moving down to the second bullet, Madam Chair, the, Trustee Agnew just pointed out about the trustees' disclosure to Board of Trustees. I have a problem with that, because there's going to be, first of all, it's a privacy issue, I think so. And second thing is, it's going to open up again, big discussions among trustees who are not even concerned about an issue happening in one corner of our system. So I have a problem with disclosed to Board of Trustees. I don't think that trustees need to know about what's happening somewhere else. So if you could remove that disclosure to trustees, I'd be happy to look at the consistency.
Sure, through you.
Trustee Saunders, is that?
The only reason I wanted was just for transparency, that there's not decisions made that, you know, maybe, maybe we should have some discussion. But if we, if we're really concerned about that, then I'm okay with that being removed. But it would be good to have some level of transparency, just to know that the issue has been dealt with, there's been bona fide reasons, and, you know, we're, it can be defended if we're ever challenged.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, Trustee Saunders, it's okay to delete that? I mean, we have no reason to believe that Director Klein is not being forthright, so I think that's assumed. And then delete must be disclosed to Board of Trustees. Trustee Saunders, is that okay with you?
That's okay, and I think above there was a word "hire" that we were going to change as well. I think it was going to be engaged or something.
Okay, so let's reread it. I'll reread it. Halden Catholic Church School must look at a potential volunteer's record of offences and consider whether the offence would have a real effect on the individual's ability to do the task and risk associated with them doing it. Grammatically in an education, we need to fix that. Halden Catholic Church School Board can refuse a potential volunteer based on a record of offences only if they show this is a reasonable and bona fide qualification.
This is right from the Ontario Human Rights. When I read it, I wasn't comfortable with the way it was either, but that's right from their record of offences policy.
Okay, I think Director Klein wants to speak to that, and then I've got a list, yeah.
Just a comment, and I'm wondering, for this succinctness of language and clarity of it, would the second bullet suffice? So on its own, without the, with the absence of the first bullet, would that suffice? So just second bullet. Volunteer applicants who submit a criminal reference check that lists any offences for which an official pardon has not been received will have their application reviewed by the Director of Education.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustee Saunders, are you amenable to removing the first bullet and leaving the second bullet alone to speak to the spirit of that?
You know, and I understand what Director Klein is saying. The only thing is that the first part is from the Ontario Human Rights Commission. So it just sort of reiterates where they're at. So I like it in that it sort of ties back to that. And the second part is, like, I like it just sort of the way it is, sorry.
Okay, thank you, Director Klein. I'm going to move on. So Trustee Dwork, Trustee Saunders, Trustee Kennedy?
Madam Chair, I didn't have my follow-up question.
Oh, pardon me.
Keeping tracks. Madam Chair, another item of clarification again. So you go to the person's record of offences, and the next bullet says criminal reference checks. So they are two different things, or is it the same thing? So criminal reference checks and record of offences.
Thank you, Trustee Dwork.
Can we have the same wording in the same places?
So adding, so I can see Andrew's adding that as you're speaking?
Yeah, I don't like that idea. I think criminal reference check is a little broader. The VSC might not capture all of these things, so I like the word criminal reference check.
Point of clarification, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, Trustee Dwork.
So do we have a definition of record of offences? We have a definition of criminal references, vulnerable sector, we have a definition of, do we have a definition of record of offences in the policy?
Trustee Dwork, you're asking inside the policy itself, as we look at it now?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And I'm sorry, I'm unclear what you want, definition of vulnerable sector and?
To me, Madam Chair, it sounds is the same thing, because it's two different things. Because I know the vulnerable sector has got two parts, which is criminal check as well.
Trustee Dwork, Superintendent Bakaych has done a lot of work with Legal on this as well. Maybe if you would mind speaking to that?
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. So I actually got the information from the Manager for Information and Record Services from Halden Regional Police Services. So it should say the vulnerable sector check, because it includes all of the criminal record and judicial matters check and a criminal record check. So, which means it includes all records, suspensions as authorized for release by the Minister of Public Safety, not criminally responsible by reason of mental disorder. In exceptional cases, non-convictions dismissed, not guilty stayed and withdrawn. So the vulnerable sector check is what we require from our parents, because it encompasses everything. It's actually the most thorough. So criminal record check is another level that doesn't really apply only to our parents. It's the vulnerable sector check.
So we should only be referencing vulnerable sector check? It's greater and writer?
Correct.
Criminal, okay.
Great, this clarification, so it involves all criminal activity, including vulnerable? Like, so it is, it would not exclude, like, say someone was an impaired driver. They wouldn't slip through this if someone had been caught with a gun or doing violence? They would be, it would be caught by this?
Thank you, Trustee Saunders, to you, Superintendent Bakaych.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Trustee Saunders, the criminal record check includes criminal convictions, summary convictions, findings of guilt under the Youth Criminal Justice Act within disclosure period. The criminal record and judicial matters check includes all of the above that I've mentioned, including outstanding entries such as charges and warrants, judicial orders, peace bonds, probation and prohibition, orders, absolute and conditional discharges for one or three years respectively. The vulnerable sector check includes all that I've stated, in addition to all record suspensions as authorized for release by the Minister of Public Safety, not criminally responsible by reason of mental disorder, and in exceptional cases, non-convictions, those that are dismissed, not guilty stayed or withdrawn.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakaych. So just for the sake of time and for fairness, I'm going to move on to Trustee Kennedy, who's not spoken yet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would agree with everything Superintendent Bakaych just said, because I'm reading the same information. The vulnerable sector check is everything you just said. And it's way more robust than the criminal record check. My question to whomever is, what's the policy right now at secondary schools? If somebody submits a vulnerable sector check and there's something on there, what do we do?
Trustee Kennedy, thank you. I'll defer to Director Klein.
Since I think Superintendent Bakaych has carried this load very far, I'm going to go to her in terms of that, but I could guess, go ahead.
If there is a vulnerable sector check that has a conviction for which a pardon has not been received, is that what you're saying, Trustee Kennedy? Yeah, so it would, it currently, as Director Klein had mentioned before, it's rare, but it does occur. And in the past, I know of two instances, they've each gone for review by the Director of Education.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakaych. Trustee Kennedy, follow-up?
So it is rare, like, so my understanding is in elementary school, it's a one-time submission. The VSC check is what we do, and then we do an annual attestation. And then, but the secondary schools, it's an end, because I have seen some emails from principals, I think we all saw, that where they have to, where they're required to do the, an annual VSC submission. It's a slightly different question, but.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Superintendent Bakaych, did you want to take that one as well?
Trustee Kennedy, I'm not sure, actually. I have to defer to Director Klein. I'm not, I can't, I'm not sure.
I guess this policy would, we have a three-year thing.
We do, so those amendments that we've already agreed upon, they would, if we accept the policy at this point, they would forward with that.
Yeah, so my only, I can just maybe talk to the amendment.
Yeah, you can talk to the amendment, go ahead.
Yeah, like, the only thing, my concern is, I do believe the first, Director Klein had said, the first section really is encompassed by the second section. So it says voluntary applicants who submit a vulnerable sector check that lists any offences for which an official pardon has not been received will have their, I just couldn't see the rest of it.
Oh, what's the rest of it? Yeah.
If we scroll down.
Will have their application reviewed by the Director of Education.
Yeah. So I guess my only concern with that is, the, I know this is a policy, but the procedure that I see that we have now with principals is, if there's anything that is on the VSC that there's not a pardon, the person will not be allowed to volunteer. So we're kind of getting a little bit more lax in what we have in place now. You know, and we're leaving it up to Director Klein to make a decision to override the policy, essentially. So, you know, when I look at, when I look at what other boards do, like your Catholic, the responsibility of the Director is to oversee compliance with the volunteers in schools' policy and related guidelines. And this is one other school board, that doesn't have anything in there about a Director, you know, receiving. It is rare, I would imagine, someone who has something on their check probably wouldn't want to submit it. But if they did really have the authority to just say, well, I think it's okay, that you can be a volunteer. Well, we're not, we're not really doing that now, from what I can see from what the guidelines say for the principal.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. And just keep in mind, once we, whatever the policy, whatever state it gets approved, and then it's up to Director Klein and his staff to create the procedure that may go along with that. But Superintendent Bakaych wanted to speak to something.
Good point, Trustee Kennedy, and through you, Madam Chair. I did, I did actually do quite a bit of research on other boards, called a couple of directors as well. They're silent on that point, and I think it's because it speaks to what our legal counsel, if you remember, Gillian, referenced at our June meeting. And that is to ensure that we are giving parents who may have had a conviction from many years ago an opportunity at least for review, because their conviction may not, may or may not, and that would be the review process, be related to the role that they're going to play as a volunteer. And so I did check actually with a few of the boards, and they remain silent because they too have this process in place, rare as they are, but they do, they do occur. And when they, and when they do occur, they are sometimes reviewed by the Superintendent or the Director.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakaych. I'm going to move on to give Trustee Powell a voice.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering if we could hear actually from Superintendent Oldman, from HR perspective, just to speak into this. Can I ask that?
Sure. Trustee Powell, through you, Director Klein?
Brilliant idea. I think Superintendent Oldman, this is very often an HR issue. In fact, you were talking about, in the end, who makes some of these judgments and assessments on it. I do know of a board not far from here where that would often come, be very much an HR issue. So I think it's a good idea to hear from Superintendent Oldman.
Thank you, Director Klein, through you, Chair. So, I mean, certainly in a volunteer capacity, it's certainly pointedly different than that of a paid relationship, right? There is no remuneration at this point, so it certainly is distinctive under employment law. The language, I'll just caution you, and I caution you not to say that volunteerism is certainly my world of work. Certainly paid work is my world of work. But the language in the first suggested amendment, the first paragraph, is actually directly from the Ontario Human Rights Commission's website, but it actually is in the context of employment. So it says, you know, in employment, employers must look at a person's record. So I would just caution you in that, because the context by which we're inserting this, and that's not to say that you can't, but my recommendation would be just to understand that distinctiveness, because I think there are different thresholds in those different relationships. Anyone who is paid, in a paid-type relationship, would certainly quantify under all employment statute as an employee. I think we're extending the Commission's interpretation from an employer, employee, or paid relationship. And I would just want to caution you on that. Certainly, it's not unreasonable to make bona fide connections when we're asking, again, in a paid employment relationship, for a vulnerable sector check or a criminal reference check, is it directly connected to the work, again, paid work, that you're performing in this case? Volunteerism is quite distinct. So I just wanted to highlight that that exact paragraph is in the employment context from the Ontario Human Rights Commission's website. So again, it's meant for a certain relationship. And so whether you want to apply that here would be under your purview, I suppose. But I would just caution you in that, because it comes with a different context.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Your experience is well duly noted. Trustee Powell, do you have a follow-up?
No.
No, I'm good, thanks. Thank you. Moving on, Trustee Dwork?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just trying to wrap my head around these two bullets. First of all, Superintendent Bakaych, could you just clarify with me? I'm very familiar with the vulnerable sector check document. The record of offences, is it a separate document altogether, or it's part of the same document?
Thank you, Trustee Dwork, Superintendent Bakaych.
Sorry, Trustee Dwork, what are you saying?
So the vulnerable sector check, I'm very familiar with that, because I get it myself. So is the record of offences a separate document, or is it part of the same document?
It encompasses all of the levels, all of the checks. So it is a, it is its own check, but it encompasses all of the record checks. Criminal record check, criminal record check, as I noted, you just said matters. So it is the most fulsome, all-encompassing check that the police do for volunteers specifically.
And do, is it just, I mean?
Thank you, Superintendent Bakaych. Trustee Dwork, do you have a follow-up? I'm still here.
Yes, I forgot you. So the cost for the vulnerable sector checks, is it the same as the cost of getting the record of offences as well as the vulnerable sector? Thinking from the user point of view, the volunteer point of view, are they paying more, or are they paying the same amount?
Thank you, Trustee Dwork. Superintendent Bakaych?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. So parents are spending an additional $30 if they apply for everything. They're just paying $30 for the vulnerable sector check, so that's the total amount.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
From what the police have.
Clarification, Madam Chair.
A quick one.
Yeah, so the requirement is only a vulnerable sector check, and I understand that. And there is no requirement for record of offences under the Education Act, Superintendent Bakaych?
Thank you, Trustee Dwork.
The requirement, through you, Chair, the requirement for the police is the vulnerable sector check for parents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, those that have already asked questions, if you could lower your hand, I'll start naming you out. Trustee Kennedy?
Yeah, so I just wanted to comment on. Yeah, so I just wanted to comment on the amendment. So we have the checks in question, so we talked about the differences between them. The Vulnerable Sector Check does encompass everything. The good thing about it is it does have built-in mechanisms within the check. So petty crimes like, I don't know, graffiti or things of that nature, those would be basically summary convictions. And those would come off the Vulnerable Sector Check after five years. So if somebody had something when they were 20, they did something silly, it's on their record check, and it's a summary conviction, that would come off. And we wouldn't see that. And that's, that's fine. That's, that's the way the system works. Also, conditional and absolute discharges come off in absolutes one year and conditional in three years. So there already are built-in mechanisms in the Vulnerable Sector Check that if anybody did have something that was kind of minor, you know, they could wait. And when those come off the check, it would be clean. We wouldn't even know anything in the past. So I'm, I kind of like the built-in mechanisms that are already in the check. And to use that alone, and if the check is clean, then to be approved as a volunteer, but if there's anything in there, I would, I would like to follow the guidelines that we kind of have in place now at the secondary level where, you know, that volunteer, they wouldn't be accepted as a volunteer until the check is clean.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Any, that was a comment, right? Do you have a question?
Well, yeah, it's just a comment. So we, like, we, if we have, we're requiring this document in the practice right now, which has been going on for many years, is that if there's something in there, I guess it hasn't happened often, then it says in the guidelines that not be allowed to volunteer. So maybe we could seek clarification from maybe Safe Schools Director or any other examples anyone can share in the past that they've seen this has ever come up, or how that, what happens in that process, what has happened here in the past? How have you been here that long?
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. And I really think on the table is whether we want this to be absolute or not. Director Klein.
I just need a little clarification. Thank you, Chair. Is this, are you talking about the offense declaration at this? No?
Like, the Vulnerable Sector Check?
Right.
Yeah, so I guess what's on, right now it's amendments, but there is, before the amendments came in, we kind of sort of agreed on a three-year term to have one every, every three years. That's what I was, that's what I'm referring to. So that, that check has built-in mechanisms to remove minor crimes up to five years or even earlier if they're, if they're discharged. So discharge, you know, you're not, you don't have a criminal record, you have an admission of guilt. So those would come off quicker, right? So what we don't want is, we don't want someone who had something minor happen to them when they were young, and now they're 35, and they can volunteer, right? So the good thing is that those checks have a built-in mechanism to remove those minor, those minor offenses, I guess, which is great. So I think we can, I would like to just rely on the check and see what it says. And if it says there's nothing in it, then that's great. If it says something's in there, then we wait till it comes off.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Director Klein, did you want to speak to us?
Just the fact that 35 is young.
I'll let you know when I get there. Okay, moving on, Trustee Agnew.
Thank you. And through you, Madam Chair. So just back to that first paragraph. I know that Director Klein had suggested, or had, you know, seen if there was a will to have that removed. And given that the second piece there is fairly all-encompassing, and after we've had a fulsome discussion, and then hearing from Superintendent Oldman, where the verbiage that has been adapted, has been adapted from wording that is for employees or people who have been hired by an organization, which is not the case here in a volunteer. Again, I would just go back to Trustee Saunders for, from the amendment to remove that paragraph, given that both the director and the superintendent at HR have said that they don't know that that needs to be there. And then perhaps we just stay with that second piece, which now that we've had the conversation about vulnerable sector screening and all of that works, I think it does capture what it is we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Trustee Saunders?
No. No, I'm not amenable to that.
Well, thank you for your consideration. That was a very quick answer. Thank you.
No, I think the first part gets into, like, it does speak as in employment, but I also think it's the same issue with volunteers. Like, I mean, so ours is substantially different than the original version that's in the Human Rights Commission. So I think this covers what we need to do, and it also puts that imperative that there has to be bona fide reasons. So the second part, sorry, and I can only see part of it. What is the second? Yeah, so the second part only asks the director to review it. There's no, there's no intention to have, you know, he's got to have bona fide reasons, there's got to be reasons. That's what the first part speaks to. The second part says that the director will review it with no structure around it. So I like the first part, because it provides the structure. The second part says that the director will, will review it. So, yeah, I sort of like it the way it is.
Okay.
Thank you, but I do appreciate your concerns.
Okay, moving on, Trustee, Chris Saunders, Trustee Murphy, your hand is up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And through you. I am just trying to wrap my head around, I'm very familiar with vulnerable sector screenings. I've never seen one that has something listed, so maybe someone can answer. If you don't clear the VSS, should that just not omit your, that should sort of be enough to disqualify you from a volunteer? Like, or are there certain, like, I'm trying to wrap my head around this. Are there certain things that are okay? Or is if you don't, like, do you just simply, because I was thinking, could the wording just say, a volunteer must complete and provide? Is the wording right, clear? Like, is it a clear vulnerable sector screening? Are there things that would show up that would be okay, and we'd say, okay, that's fine, they can, they can volunteer at the board? I'm just trying to understand. Shouldn't nothing show up?
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. And I think that's what's being debated right now, whether it's all or none. Director Klein.
Rely on Superintendent Bakaych to add any shades to this. But I think we've used a few times tonight and in previous meetings, the colorful example of, you know, DUI, and with DUI, again, perhaps a youthful error in judgment, and then someone is coming in to serve pizza or something like that, would that suffice? So that would be something that would come into it as one example. But we know there's a whole litany of things that people can do to get them in trouble. And the issue would be, does that really make a difference in terms of their impact to volunteer, to help a school out? And that would be then something that would be judged. Superintendent Bakaych, is that my, is that fair to say? Because I know there's others as well.
Through you, Madam Chair. Director Klein, I think so. I can only go back, Trustee Murphy, to what the legal opinion was that Gillian had stated, we had the documentation provided in June, that if the board were to consider allowing individuals who have been charged with or convicted of offenses, that would not impact the risk they pose in the school environment. Her suggestion would be to create a procedure that we are working on to delineate that information. But I have to say that we've had that discussion, and we've sort of gone back and forth regarding what the threshold is. And there may be, like we've said, they are rare in their occurrence, but if there is something that is within the year, so an absolute discharge is a year, falls off after a year, or if it's, if it's a criminal offense for which the individual has been found guilty and received a conditional discharge on conditions set out in a probation, that request is made, it's disclosed, and then after three years, it's no longer disclosed. So again, it would be in the circumstance where a parent falls within that timeframe. If it, it wouldn't be a conviction related, obviously, to the extreme offenses, convictions where involved sexual offenses, et cetera. I think what we're talking about here, and what we've been discussing quite at length, is those possible criminal offenses that someone has experienced. But in this, in the relationship of a volunteer role, would they impact or set at risk the safety of the students? And so Director Klein has given an example whereby, for an example, if someone was accused of theft, and they're not dealing with funds at the school level, but they want to hand out pizza, would, should they be permitted to volun, should a parent be permitted to do that? And again, as I noted with Trustee Kennedy, the boards around us are silent on that because they're, they take this under consideration. But I can only offer that we've been given legal recommendations, and we've had quite a few examples, and it's up to the will of the board.
Thank you Superintendent Bakaych. Trustee Murphy, any follow-up to that?
Yeah, so forgive me if this was already covered by Superintendent Oldman, but are we currently following these blue bullets in our hiring practices for like, for staff that are paid? I'm just trying to understand, are they to be treated differently if they're being paid or not?
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. I think we're getting a little off. That's the hiring practice as opposed to volunteers, Trustee Murphy?
I'm really not saying I shouldn't be asking that.
Well, you can ask whatever you want, of course. But we're talking about the policy and volunteers. I wouldn't compare volunteers to paid employees.
I see what you're saying, but I'm just trying to get clarity on, if they're both in the building with students, what exactly is the difference besides? I don't know.
I know what you mean. And I think the struggle here is, everybody's trying to keep our kids safe. Absolutely. We're trying to find that middle ground, where that we're, the old saying, cutting our nose off to spite our face, right? Director Klein? I don't know if you wanted to ask a question or just? Yeah, Trustee Murphy, I'm not going to cut you off, but it's really not germane to this policy. I know what you're doing. I know what you're trying to compare, but we need to keep volunteers in mind, because they're not paid, and they're not unionized. And there's a lot of differences here between what we're talking about. So.
Just through you, Madam Chair. I think I'm just trying to look through it through the lens of the human, the human rights lens, right? So surely they have the same human rights. Like, how, and do we decipher one vulnerable sector screening for a paid employee differently than a volunteer? I guess that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around.
Okay, Trustee Murphy, Trustee, Superintendent Oldman, would you like to take a stab at that?
Thank you, through you, Chair. So in terms of triple I-10, which is what governs our practice through employment, which again, which is where this language does directly come from, that first paragraph, I would confirm, yes, any employability that we're doing where we require a VSS, which would be all employment, because there is the potentiality for us to, for any staff to engage with students, or any paid individual by the board to engage with students, should have a Vulnerable Sector Check in hand. And that would be in concert with making bona fide decisions when and if a flag or an offense is listed. Certainly, we do have a number of individuals who we would hire in that capacity, because we would make that bona fide consideration, and that's in accordance with the Ontario Human Rights Code, which, which might be, and I don't mean to overextend myself here, might be a suggestion, like, maybe, maybe that's how you, you take the amendment. And anyway, I'm overextending, but, but that, anything could be in accordance with the Ontario Human Rights Code. I think that's what we're intending to do, and that would account for the reasonable and bona fide qualification in your first paragraph.
Thank you Superintendent Oldman. I'm going to have to move on to the next in line. Trustee Dwork.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have two bullets here, the first one and second. We have determined that the Vulnerable Sector Check is all-encompassing and good. The first bullet, we are telling our volunteers, we need a check every three years, plus you've got to pay $30 more for every Record of Offenses. So I've already heard from the first one, Record of Offenses, that's $30 more, right?
Thank you, Trustee Dwork.
No, no, that's what I clarified. That's what I thought I heard.
Superintendent Bakaych, you did mention $30. Maybe clarify?
Yes.
Through you, Madam Chair. The Vulnerable Sector Check costs $30. I think, I think what the confusion is with the first bullet, it actually is covered in the second bullet. So it is repetitive, but I understand what Trustee Saunders is trying to say. But we are, we are talking about offenses and convictions, which in the, in the paragraph above is, is referring to the same thing. So the second paragraph, Volunteer Applicants Who Submit a Vulnerable Sector Check That List Any Offenses, which is Record of Offenses For Which An Official Pardon Has Not Been Received, Will Have Their Application Reviewed By The Director. So it does, that notion about HCDSB Can Refuse A Potential Volunteer Based On Their Record Of Offenses is encompassed in the review of the Director of Education.
Thank you for correcting me.
Thank you Superintendent Bakaych. Trustee Dwork, follow up?
No, I've not completed my question, my first question, Madam Chair. So let me continue. So I've already heard from red tiers that three years is too short a time for them to pay the money to get this done. So I have a problem with the first part, the first bullet. I don't see how I can support that. So, Madam Chair, may I put in a request to subdivide the question under consideration?
Okay, so the ask here is, we have this amendment that's been moved and seconded, moved by Trustee Saunders, seconded by yourself, two bullet points. So you're asking to remove them and make them separate amendments?
No, Madam Chair. This is one amendment, but they're two mutually exclusive events. They're not, one doesn't depend on the other.
So you want to make an amendment to the amendment?
No, Madam Chair. It's just a request to vote on them separately. It's the same, same motion.
That's what I just said.
I have a problem tonight.
But it's been moved and seconded as two bullet points.
Yes.
That's how we have a mover and a seconder.
Correct.
So you want to separate them?
Right.
Into two separate motions or amendments? Correct? Am I saying it correctly?
Two separate votes.
Two separate votes?
Correct. Thank you.
Is anyone opposed to that?
Yes. Could I also?
Okay, hold, hold, sorry, Trustee Saunders. So you're opposed to voting on them separately?
Yeah.
And Trustee Kennedy is as well?
Madam Chair, this is not debatable. This is the decision of the Chair, as per bylaw 10.12.
Let's read that bylaw.
Chair.
Just one sec, Trustee Saunders. Right back. Thank you, Trustee Dwork. So I'm going to read the bylaw you're referencing. 10.12, Subdivision Of Questions. When a question under consideration contains two or more distinct propositions, any particular propositions upon the request of any member may be considered and voted upon separately. Okay, so that references the ability to split the amendment. Trustee Saunders.
If you want, I can eliminate some of this amendment to make it easier. So the second half, where the director has reviewed, you want to eliminate that altogether? So we just have the one? So I'll ask?
I'm not in favor of that. I'm not in favor of that.
Well, okay, so then this is what I'll do. Why don't we just eliminate the entire amendment altogether? And we'll, we'll just move on. So my entire amendment, I will withdraw?
Okay, so you want to remove this entire amendment?
Yeah, withdraw the entire amendment.
By your order, Madam Chair.
Trustee Dwork?
The amendment is owned by the board at this point in time. It's moved and seconded. It cannot be withdrawn unless we have unanimous consent.
Okay, good point. Thank you, Trustee Dwork. Because now, when you're moving second, he's exactly right, it's now the ownership of the board, just like we did with the other amendment earlier. So do we have agreement? Any opposed to removing this entire amendment?
I'm opposed, Madam Chair. I'd like to keep the second part.
Okay. Or we could remove it all, and you could make your own amendment?
No, Madam Chair. I want to go through the exercise again. We have this motion. I've asked for, requested for a subdivision of the question. It's up to you to decide on the validity of my request, and then you can take vote on both of them separately. It's non-debatable.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Dwork. I'm taking it under consideration. Trustee Saunders, I appreciate what you're trying to do there by removing it. However, I rule, will rule under bylaw 10.12 that we will subdivide this question, because I think we need to move on. And I think there's some value in part of this amendment or all of the amendments. So, so we're going to split it into two. So when a question under consideration contains two or more distinct propositions, because there's two different ones here, and upon the request of any member, which is Trustee Dwork, we'll consider it and vote it upon separately. So that is my ruling? Anyone want to appeal my ruling? Speak now? No, okay. Okay, so let's regroup. So what we're going to do, it's already been moved and seconded, now it's been subdivided, we're going to vote on the very first part of this amendment, which starts, HCDSB Must Look At A Potential Volunteer. So that is my ruling. what we're going to vote on first. Is everybody clear with? Trustee Kennedy?
I just have a question, Madam Chair. Someone says HCSB must look at a potential volunteer. Who is that? Like, does that mean the Board of Trustees? Does it mean?
That's the corporate board, which is, which Director Klein is the head of through the Chair of our Board. So it's the.
Should be the principal.
The principal?
Well, part of our amendment is that we're asking them to look at the potential volunteers' record of offenses to go to Director Klein. A principal is a delegate of Director Klein, out of the superintendents and the teachers and all the staff of the Hall and Catholic Districts to our Board. So by referral is a principal. You're correct. No? Yes? Yeah. Okay. Trustee Kennedy? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say that from what, you know, talking about safety a lot last year, it just looks like we're going a little bit backwards. What actually is happening on the ground hasn't happened for many years. That, like I said, the DSC has built-in mechanisms in it to remove small offenses over a reasonable period of time. It seems like we're, you know, I think that volunteering should be a bit of a privilege, not a right. I think we're giving too much open this year to, to really approve when the DSC has been failed. I mean, these are vulnerable children. You know, it says anyone under age of eighteen because of their age, disability, or other circumstances according to the Hall and Regional Police, whether temporary or permanent, or in a position of dependence on others. And I don't think it sets a great example to be, to give these opens here when we are actually going in the other direction from what we've had for many, many years. So I won't be supporting this.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy for the comment. Okay, we're going to move on. So we're voting on the first bullet of the amendment to this policy. I will be asking you whether you're in favor of keeping this bullet in the amendment. Okay? So if you vote in favor, you're voting in favor to keep this bullet. Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Dwork?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
I have a point of clarification. I, we are voting to remove it.
No, you're voting to keep it in.
The first bullet in blue.
Yes. So if you vote opposed, you don't want this first bullet?
Opposed.
Sorry, trustee Murphy, opposed? Okay. Trustee Powell?
Opposed.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Student trustee McGuire?
Opposed.
And I am also opposed. So the first bullet of the amendment is to be removed. Okay, now we're going to move on. And we're going to vote for the second portion of the amendment. I will read that. Volunteer applicants who submit a vulnerable sector check that lists any offenses for which an official pardon has not been received will have their application reviewed by the Director of Education. Again, if you vote in favor, you're voting in favor to keep this bullet point in the policy. Trustee Saunders?
Opposed.
Trustee Powell? In favor. Thank you. Trustee Murphy?
Can you come back to me, please?
Sure. Trustee Kennedy?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Sorry, I, I feel like I can't wrap my head around this. So I'll wait, if I vote, I am voting in favor to keep this?
Yes. If you vote in favor, the bullet stays in the policy. I'll come back to you. I'll go to student trustee McGuire. Student trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
And I am, what am I? I'm in favor. Trustee Kelly was in favor. Yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Yep. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six in favor, four opposed, which means this bullet point stays in the policy as approved. Okay, thank you, everybody. Superintendent Bakaych had her hand up and I couldn't hear, so Superintendent Bakaych.
Thank you, Chair. Just as a matter of housekeeping, would it, would it be approved to just move that bullet below, the vulnerable sector check will be dated within 120 days of submission to the principal, just so that it flows better?
So Andrew, maybe you could pull up the section that Superintendent Bakaych wants to move that to, just for the flow you're thinking of?
Just second page, Andrea. Are we there? Second page, Andrea.
This, we are on page two right now.
And it's right, right after the amendment that says a vulnerable sector check shall be dated within 120 days of submission to the principal on the third page. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakaych. Is anyone opposed to moving the approved amendment to this area of the policy?
I would, Madam Chair, I would just say, I don't know if we have to use the, I think it's called record suspension now, not official pardon, so I don't know if we can.
The language is provided by legal, correct? That's embedded through legal. Okay. Well, there's no consensus. We can, we can vote to move it if we want, but we'll leave it where it is for now. Okay. All right. So we've completed with the amendment. We've split the amendment into two. We voted on that. So now we have the policy that has been amended from the discussion last time and now is an action item. So I do see a few hands up. We have talked about this policy, but you know, it's a very valuable policy. So we can continue to discuss or we can move on and vote on this policy and see if it's going to be sent to the Board on September the 19th. Trustee Murphy?
Madam Chair, a point of clarification.
Yes, sir.
So I'm not sure whether this should go to the Board. There's been substantial changes to this policy. So does it have to go to the Board and then go out for stakeholder feedback? What's?
Trustee Dwork, my understanding is, so we approve a here policy and then the policy recommends to the Board. Then if the Board approves it, then we know as per the flow charts that are attached, it would have to go out for stakeholder.
To be which reading, Madam Chair? First, third reading? What's the flow like? Just to jog my memory?
Okay, we talked about this as a discussion. Now it's here as an action item. If this is approved, it goes to the Board on September 19th. Then it goes out for stakeholder feedback for three weeks, and then it comes back to policy. The second reading falls.
Okay, thank you.
Wow. Proud of myself for that. Okay. Trustee Murphy? Okay, everybody. So let's go to recorded vote. We are now voting on policy II-37 as amended. Okay, and we're voting to see if this goes to the Board for approval. I will start. Trustee Saunders?
Opposed.
Opposed. Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew? Okay. Student trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Thank you. I don't see any other student trustees chimed in. Trustee Saunders is opposed. Trustee Murphy?
Sorry, I had just left for a minute. I were voting for the policy with the new amendment.
Correct. So as we worked on the policy, the policy has amended. Now we're voting on to move to the Board for final approval.
Jane?
Jane?
Uh, trustee Agnew, is she there? Trustee?
I'm in favor of the policy.
You're in favor. Thank you, trustee Agnew. I can hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I am in favor. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven in favor, one opposed, and one abstention. Meaning that this policy will move up forward to the policy, sorry, move to the, oh my God, move to the September 19, 2023 regular Board meeting. Thank you, everybody. Okay, we're moving on. Six, yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Thank you. And through you, Madam Chair, just a clarification regarding the flow of the policy. So it will go to the Board for approval and then for stakeholder feedback. It'll come back. It's not a first or second reading because it's not a brand-new policy. So it will come back to Policy Committee with the stakeholder feedback for review by trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakaych. Appreciate that. Awesome. Okay, we're going to move into 6.4. Let me just do a little housekeeping here myself. Okay, so policy II-54, Prior Learning Assessment and Recognition for Mature Students. Trustees, may I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that the newly drafted policy II-54, Prior Learning Assessment and Recognition for Mature Students be forwarded to the September 19, 2023 regular Board meeting for first reading? May I please have a mover?
I'll move it.
Trustee Powell, seconder?
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Kelly? Superintendent Del Sordo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And through you, Madam Chair, policy II-54, Prior Learning Assessment and Recognition for Mature Students is to provide the consideration of the Policy Committee for the newly drafted policy II-54 as recommended by staff. The new drafted policy II-54, Prior Learning Assessment and Recognition for Mature Students was presented as a discussion item at the June 13, 2023 Policy Committee Meeting. The purpose of this policy is to support HCSDB in fulfilling the mandatory requirements of PPM 132, Prior Learning and Assessment Recognition for, for Mature Students, and the Ontario Schools' Kindergarten to Grade 12 Policy and Program Requirements 2016 for Ontario Schools, for supporting mature students who are enrolled in Ontario schools, including secondary schools and continuing education. A mature student is defined as a student who is at least 18 years of age on or after January 1st of the current school year, and who is enrolled in a program for the purpose of obtaining an Ontario Secondary School Diploma, known as an OSSD. School Boards must ensure that the following groups of mature students are also granted equivalent credits for a OSSD under Ontario Schools Intermediate and Senior Divisions, Grade 12, 7 to 12, and OAC's Program and Diploma Requirements 1989 OSIS for students who enrolled in Ontario Secondary Schools in Grade 9 before September 1, 1999, as well as a secondary school graduation diploma, an SSGD, under circular HS1 197981 for students who enrolled in the Ontario Secondary School System in Grade 9 before September 1, 1984. Secondary principals are responsible for determining when the mature student was previously enrolled in the secondary school system on the basis of evidence, for example, the Ontario Student Transcript, the OST, and/or the Ontario Provincial Report Card, grades 9 to 12. The following recommendation is presented to the consideration of the Board.
Thank you, Superintendent Del Sordo. I will now open the floor to any questions. Trustees may have. I'm seeing none? Oh, trustee Dwork?
Yeah. Madam Chair, thank you, Superintendent Del Sordo, for this. It's very exciting to see the, the items the Ministry has proposed for skilled trades and all stuff. Are we, okay, so we, we have seen in the news a lot of changes coming in through and the Ministry's skipping on updating and making changes. So does this policy allow flexibility to incorporate changes? Because I see a lot of these changes coming, but the Ministry's sending more and more changes. I just want to throw it out there and find out, are we going to update the policies again and again?
Thank you, trustee Dwork. Through you, Director Kacan, to Superintendent Del Sordo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And through you, Madam Chair, thank you for the question, trustee Dwork. Yes, it is flexible and it's up to the principal's discretion to really look at evidence of learning to obtain the OSSD. So there always has to be evidence of learning to support the mature student in a quick way. So whatever changes are happening to obtain that, a diploma, will be applicable.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Dwork. Any follow-up?
Uh, no, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I don't see trustee Dwork will put his hand down. After that, I will not see anybody with their hand up. Let's move forward to a vote on the main motion. I will take it now to a recorded vote of the main motion. Super, oh, sorry. Student trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Uh, trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Favor.
Trustee Agnew? Trustee Agnew? Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
I am also in favor, unanimous. Trustee Agnew? It's okay. Yeah, it's okay. We've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine in favor, zero opposed. The policy will now be brought forward to the next regular Board meeting on September the 19th, 2023. Thank you. Okay, we are moving over to 6.5, policy II-15, Workplace Violence. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that policy II-15, Workplace Violence, be forwarded to the September 19, 2023 regular Board meeting for approval? May I please have a mover? Trustee Dwork?
Dwork.
Second, Powell, thank you. Superintendent Oldman, you now have the floor.
Thank you through your chair. Again, in accordance with our legislative requirements, both in policy and in accordance with the Ontario Occupational Health and Safety Act, as it relates to workplace violence, we have made some minor housekeeping changes with the intention of making it clear for all staff and extensive to all staff what to, what steps may be, may be taken and where they can look in the event of a workplace violence occurrence. We've updated the definitions and requirement sections accordingly. Other than those, there are no other changes to the, to the annual review here.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. At this point, I will now open the floor if any trustees have any questions or clarification. Trustee Dwork?
Madam Chair, thank you. I look, I'm looking at this policy, question Superintendent Oldman through Madam Chair. We're talking about workplace violence. We're talking only about physical violence. Violence can be of various natures. Why are we not defining the mental stress, which is also a form of violence? Is that not a requirement?
Thank you, trustee Dwork. That's through Director Klein to Superintendent Oldman.
Thank you through you, Chair. I, I would assert that physical violence doesn't encompass, and the, and the law encompasses that all violence and how it's experienced by the individual. I mean, it would be like health is health. Mental health would still be physical health. So I would make the assertion that under the law, those, those are encompassed.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Trustee Dwork?
Thank you.
Any follow-up? No?
No, Madam Chair.
You're going to put your hand down? Perfect. Okay, see, I don't see any other questions. We will now go to a recorded vote of the main motion. Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Superintendent, student trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Uh, trustee Agnew, I don't believe is on the line anymore. She is, let me know. And I'm in favor. Perfect. The policy will be brought forward unanimously to the next regular Board meeting on September the 19th, 2023 for first reading. Okay, everyone, we're moving on to item 6.6 on the agenda, policy II-16, Workplace Discrimination and Harassment. Trustees, may I please have someone move that the policy- Trustees, may I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that policy II-I dash sixteen workplace discrimination and harassment be forwarded to the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three regular Board meeting for approval? May I have a mover?
I'll move. Second.
Carabella? Oh, she was quick. Trustee Kelly? Perfect. Superintendent Oldman, you now have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Chair, me again. So in terms of this policy, this is both calling to our obligations on, to, under the Ontario Occupational Health and Safety Act, but an extension that of the Ontario Human Rights Code. So we are obligated to have a policy as such, it is in full form. We have reviewed and we've updated under the definition and requirement sections and made some minor housekeeping to make us, or to keep us, I guess, in, in compliance with both these, these statutes.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Oldman, trustees, I will now open the floor if there are any questions or clarifying issues we need. Why am I not surprised? Trustee Duarte?
Through you, Madam Chair, so we talk about bullying in this, in this policy, but I do not see a reference to the policies and procedures, is that something which could be added?
Thank you, Trustee Duarte, to, I believe, through Director Klein to Superintendent Oldman.
Thank you, and through you, Chair, may I, may I clarify the question specifically?
So somewhere down in the policy, you talk about workplace bullying.
An example, yes.
I've seen it down here.
It's at the top of page three of six.
So do we have a reference to the policy on bullying, we have a nice policy on bullying, so should that be in the associated policies and procedures right on top as a reference?
I understand, and through you, Chair, so I, I think in the context that you're referring, Trustee Duarte, I, I think we're referring to bullying as it's understood through our students, so in this case, this would be bullying as it relates with staff. And so that, that kind of workplace toxicity, workplace bullying, so I'd make that distinction, so that would be my interpretation of, of the existing. I, I might refer to Superintendent Cordero, but, but certainly under bullying as it relates to students is, is, I mean, equally concerning, but, but certainly distinctive for these purposes and, and not, I guess, where we're called under the Occupational Health and Safety Act and the Human Rights Code in the way that this policy speaks to, if that helps.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense, thank you, makes sense.
No follow up?
Yeah, no.
Thank you, Trustee Duarte? I'll wait as you put your hand down. And done, okay. Trustees, do we have any other questions? Other than that, we'll move forward to a recorded vote of the main motion. Item six point six we're voting on, let's start with Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Student Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Uh, Trustee Agnew is not on the line, and I am in favor, this motion passes. This policy will be brought forward to the next regular Board meeting on September the nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Moving on through the agenda, we're now at item seven, which are entitled discussion items, there are no discussion items. Item number eight, information items, so a few bullet points here, item eight point one to eight point two are the administrative procedures provided for your information and were already approved at the September fifth, twenty twenty-three senior administrative meeting. Item eight point three, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, Policy Committee Work Plan provides an overview of the policies that are on the docket for this year's Policy Committee meetings. And item eight point four provides an illustrative example of the steps involved in HCDSB's policy review cycle. Item nine, miscellaneous information, there is no miscellaneous information, nothing was added. Item ten, correspondence, we do not have anything that was submitted. Item eleven, in camera, there is no in camera agenda this evening. So now we're at item twelve, motion to excuse absent committee members. We do have two, may I have a mover to excuse student trustee Chua and student trustee Dupu? May I have a mover? Trustee Carabella? Seconder?
I'll second it.
Trustee Powell? That trustee, student trustees Chua and Dupu are to be excused in this meeting, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Perfect, all in favor, awesome. Okay, item number thirteen, with this adjournment and closing prayer, may I please have a motion to adjourn, may I have him over? Trustee Carabella? May I have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Trustee Murphy? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Seeing none? Thank you, everybody, I will now ask Trustee Duarte to end the meeting with a closing prayer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, please join me in the sign off of faith, and I'm using an old recycled prayer, in the mother, father, son, Holy Spirit. Almighty God, we started this meeting with you, and we are closing it with you. Thank you for making this meeting a success. We would not have done it without you, because many of our plans, many are our plans, but it is you who establishes them. May the things we have learned today stir our hearts and may we put them into action. In the mother, father, and son, Holy Spirit.
Thank you, Trustee Duarte, thank you, everybody, staff, trust.